Yeah, so hello everyone, good evening. I am Ravinder Chaudhary and I am here today this fine evening with you guys to tell you about resume and LinkedIn hacks that you can use to you know achieve the kind of engagement and the responses that you want from the recruiters, okay? So before we jump into the session, let me first start by introducing myself. So I am Ravinder Chaudhary. Currently, I am working as in SG three at Adobe Systems. I am a full stack developer who is currently working on a tech stack of Python, Django, React and all the three major clouds. That is AWS, Microsoft Azure and GCP. Prior to this, I worked as a big data engineer for an year with Atel. I have been associated with the you know mentoring and the teaching community for past more than four years. And here I am today to tell you about the resume and LinkedIn building hacks. Before we dive deep into this session before we started, just a quick fun fact. Do you really know like the most resumes that are being submitted? They ask them in less than 10 seconds. In less than 10 seconds, it is decided whether based on this resume, the candidate will move forward or not. So this basically tells us how important it is to make sure that our resume follows the good structure so that it passes all the checks, all the pre-checks to be more specific, so that it reaches to the human recruiters, it reaches the actual hiring managers and you get a fair chance. By the end of the session, you will have a ATS checklist, a LinkedIn checklist and a six-day action plan to accelerate your growth in 2025. So without waiting any further, let's begin the session everyone. Today, what we are going to talk about, we are going to talk about these six key aspects which are crafting the ATS-friendly resume. Then live resume it here down where I'll be showing you some sample resumes and I'll be giving some suggestions on that based on the resumes which were submitted before the session. Third one will be boosting the recruiter visibility through LinkedIn, how you can leverage LinkedIn for that. Then we are going to talk about the end-to-end pipeline on how exactly the hiring process looks like and where can we work to increase our chances of getting interviewed. Then we are going to work on an activity of guided working where you are going to do some action. You are going to work on the action items that we have discussed and in the end I'll be giving you a step-by-step guide for the career acceleration. Alright? So let's begin crafting ATS-friendly resumes. Now, before we jump into that, it's very crucial that you understand what exactly is ATS and why it is so important? Why is it that everyone in today's time talk about it? ATS is basically the applicant tracking system. Now you can imagine if there is a job posting, that job posting immediately goes into the company's career website and there are relevant people in the companies, you know, hiring team which post about it on LinkedIn. Because of these surfaces, the activity, the visibility on the job posting is very high and there is a huge number of applicants which are applying on a job. And it is practically not possible for a human, for an HR to go through each one of these resumes. Just think about it. Even if you have to filter out from hundred resumes, if you give around one minute to each resume, you will end up spending two hours. And the scale that we are talking about right now, that scale is very high. We are talking like thousand plus resumes. So that's where companies have started using, not just started using, they have been using for quite a long time. These ATS tools, that is applicant tracking systems too, which will check your resume and do the basic, the first level of filtering. So it's very important that you create your resume keeping these aspects in mind, right? We must tailor our resume to meet these ATS requirements. This thing. Now, what exactly is an ATS-friendly resume, right? What exactly accounts for in an ATS-friendly resume? Let's talk about it. So there are some main pointers. There are some common mistakes that students often do. These are using some non-standard fonts or formats or including some irrelevant personal information or failing to use the keywords from the job description. We do not have to make these mistakes. We have to avoid these and we have to follow a static structure, a common structure for our resume. What that includes? Well, that includes having some clear concise bullet points. Don't write big huge paragraphs like five-five-line paragraphs. Instead, use very clear concise bullet points with proper adjectives telling what the impact was. Impact is a key term here, okay? Use one column layout, text-based layout. Don't use like multi-column. I've come across several people who create like two columns. Those two column layout for resume is not really good because ATS tools have difficulties in reading through such resumes and just think about it. You do not want to take that risk because if ATS filtering doesn't go through, then you have zero chance, right? Use some static font guys. Don't play around with different fonts. Don't play around with font size. Use these static fonts. Have a very specific file name, having like resume template, one resume template. These these kind of names are the first red flag. In fact, I also don't cater to such requests if they come to me. So think about it. If such requests come to you, would you even want to look at the resume? So these are very some small, small tips, but they have huge impact. Use the keywords from the GD, mirror the exact language. This is very important, very crucial guys. For any job that you are applying to, you, in most of the cases, you will have the job description ready in hand with you. So it's important that you leverage that job description, you include the terms from the job description in your resume. It said that primarily the first one-third part of a resume, like top one-third part of a resume should have those keywords which are there in the job description. This one is also very important guys, quantifiable achievements highlighted. So more often than not, in fact, very often I've seen like people just use adjectives to say I've made huge impact, like amazing performance, increased efficiency. But how do you measure these terms? These are some mere adjectives. So you need some metrics, you need some numbers to show the impact, to show the outcome that you got from the techniques that you tried. Like, don't just say increased footfall, increased user footfall on your website. Just talk in terms of how much increase we are talking, use percentages, use numbers. This one guys says what you should not do, you should not add any photos, should not add date of birth, any other postal details that is irrelevant to the HR and the hiring team. Just think about it. If you are at their place, what would you do with that information? It's of no use, right? And lastly, again, common mistake by a lot of people, resume should not be more than one page. Your resume should stick to one page if you have any overall experience of less than 10 years. And I believe that is the case with all of us present here today. So stick with one-page resume. If you are experienced more than 10 years, then probably you can go to two or one and a half, but definitely not more than two. But for our audience where we have like in less than 10 years of experience, stick to one pager resume. This is a very strict guideline, right? Okay, so now that we know what different ATS resume tools are and what we should do, let's move on. Let's move on to the resume structure. So I believe we have a variety of candidates here. There are some students who are already working in the industry. So if you are a college student, your resume should follow that strict format. First of all, you should specify your education, then your projects, then your experience, if you have any, and then your skill set. But if you're an experienced candidate, then your resume will be a little different. You will first give a summary like probably a two-line summary, two-two-three-line, don't go beyond that. Then state your experience, your professional experience where you've been working, what kind of projects you have been working on, what kind of impact you have made and as I see again and again guys, use metrics. Then talk about your personal projects. If you have any, it's, I always suggest like getting a job is an easy task. You'll get into a job, you'll work there, it's fine. But working at a corporate place, working at a good company is not equivalent to focusing on your professional development. Professional development means outside your work hours as well, you are spending some time in your own development where you are learning about new market trends, new things which are coming in the industry because come on, we are working in a very dynamic sector where things change very rapidly. Two to three years back, no one would have imagined generative AI would create such a huge impact, right? But today did. So you need to keep learning with the changing dynamics of the industry. So you should have your some personal projects as well. So summary, experience, some personal projects, then your skill set and at the end, keep your education. Alright, have a very clear heading guys, have some clickable links. So this is again an often thing which I have experienced in the interviews and I also ask when I am interviewing someone like if you are mentioning your project, then where is the project's GitHub link? It needs to be there. Add the GitHub link of your project in your resume and the link, when someone clicks on that link, the page that will open, that page should include a readme file. If you don't know about it, I would suggest you read about it. What is a readme file? It basically gives a small description of what the project is about. Include some screenshots so that because come on, like the interviewer wants a GitHub link, but they cannot go and check all the code that you have written, right? So have those working clickable links in the GitHub, have the proper readme file where you include the screenshots from the project that you have created. And guys, come on, include relevant skills only. In today's time, if you are writing like HTML, CSS, JavaScript in your resume, I'm not sure how much impact that would make. If you are writing React JS, that by default means that you are familiar with JavaScript or CSS or HTML, right? So include the relevant skills only. It's not like we are trying to create a catalog of different skillset which exist in the market, include only the relevant skills. Alright, okay, resume structure. Now again, I have said this quite a few times, impact metrics. So you should use this one formula that I say X, Y, Z formula for writing those bullet points highlighting the impact that you have made in the process. The formula is I did X which is majored by Y by doing Z. Giving a very small example as you can see on the screen right now. If you are simply writing, building chat app using Mern, it is not very impactful. It is not making any difference. It is not telling the interviewer, what did you achieve by making that? But at the same time, if you rewrite it using X, Y, Z formula, you can say something like shipped real-time chat app using, used by 180-plus users and cut latency by 35% via socket dot I plus caching. So this is very impactful. You have specified the metrics to show the impact that you have made. You have specified some information about the text tags like how you did it and you also told what you did in the first place. So this is how you can move away from the standard English adjective-based bullet points to a more focused, impact-driven, metric-driven X, Y, Z formula-based bullet points. Some very common metrics guys that you can use in your resume would be around users, around the time that your project has saved, around the speed or cost of your projects have saved, some bugs that have been fixed or bugs that have been reduced and the percentage in adoption. So these are some very common quick metrics for you. So I think this gives us a very, very clear idea about what exactly ATS-friendly resume would look like. Now let's move forward. Let's talk about some resumes. I want to show you some resumes and I want to give you some feedbacks around those. So let me share my screen. Um. Is it visible? Can anyone confirm please? Yeah guys, is the. Alright, yeah, thank you. Chiranjeevi, so yes, talking about these resumes. So first of all, there was this resume which was submitted by Rahul. So this resume is created across four pages. First major red flag, four pages, not a good idea, right? So cut down the resume to two pages, to one page only. Alright? And as you can see, there is a lot of white space which is wasted on the space, like on the right-hand side, you can see a lot of white space which is wasted. So utilize that space in a proper manner. In the tech stack, as you can see, this is what I was talking about. We are not trying to create a catalog of different skillset that exist in the market. List down only relevant technologies, list down only relevant tech stack which you know would encompass other category of technologies as well. Right now guys, we are creating a resume, right? So whenever you are, you are creating a resume, always focus that you create two resumes. One is the generic one and one which you will always alter while applying. If you have a proper job description, always alter your resume according to the job description and then apply. Alright, so this is like not a good idea. At the experience level, this again is not a good way to share your experience. Have an experience heading and under that experience heading, include top like latest two-to-three resume, two-to-three experiences, that's all. If you have worked in like 10 companies, don't have to mention all the 10, include relevant latest two-to-three companies, that's all. And share what you have done in those companies, what was the, what, what was the project you worked on, what was the impact you made? Guys, again, I'm saying it again and again, project, impact that you have made and metrics. A metrics are a way to help you show the impact. So it is very important when you say that. So that is what can be improved here, like below every company, you can probably add your, the impact that you have made. Instead of just listing the roles and responsibilities which are listed here, you can work, list down what major work you contributed to, what major feature release you worked on, right? So I think, and then yeah, that is all. In the end guys, certifications, this is also something that I'll also talk about from other resumes as well. When you are mentioning certifications, the intention is not for you to share the name of the certification and how much time you did it, no. The intention is what you learnt out of it, what did you add to your skillset by doing that certification? Certifications are just like a feather in the cap. So having more certifications would help, but it's also important that you have relevant certifications. Talking about the next resume, I'll probably talk about one more. Let me talk about this one, yeah. So this resume guys, again, a good resume, but again, a lot of space is wasted and it spans across two, two pages. So not a good idea. Your resume should stick to one page. There is a lot of space which is wasted on the top. At the bottom, this section is unnecessary, totally unnecessary, like whatever soft skills. This section guys, to be honest, is expected. In today's time, this sort of, it is sort of expected that you would have good communication. You would have that capability to prioritize your time so that you can work between different tasks. So adding that to your resume explicitly does not make much sense. So you can probably ignore, you can probably remove this piece. And additional information section, that too is. Yeah, this additional information section, this too we can remove so that, because come on, no one really looks forward to knowing like, what's your gender, what's your nationality, what's your marital status, that does not matter to the companies. This can be displayed in probably a better way, like in a more concise manner, you can share what all skillsets, you know. So, and this thing, this timeline here gives a pretty wrong idea, like for one course, let's say if you are telling like when did it start, when it end, for the second course also you should do the same. Like what, what idea does it give? Did the graduation was completed in this year or was it started in this year? Like obviously by looking at it, we know it was completed in this year. But don't make such mistakes and don't give that, you know, point of thought to the other person. Because as I mentioned, your resume will hardly be given like 30 seconds. Within the 30 seconds, if the recruiter has to figure out these details, it's not really a good utilization of their time and they are not really using the time to getting to know you, right? So these were some like resumes that I wanted to show you on how you can improve. Now. Before we move further guys, anyone who is having any doubt, any query, anything else? Okay, so live resume it here down, moving forward. Now I'll talk about how exactly you can use basically LinkedIn, LinkedIn as a tool to boost your visibility across recruiters and to land different, at least options to interview. So optimizing LinkedIn for recruiters. So first of all, it is very crucial. LinkedIn in today's time, it is your own brand, right? LinkedIn is your own brand, like it's your own portfolio and it's your own referral machine. It's like your online resume, LinkedIn. Everyone checks that, so it's important you update your LinkedIn properly so that it gives the right message about your skillset, about your experience to the recruiters. So incorporate industry-specific keywords in your profile, incorporate industry-specific skills in your profile and you know, you need to make sure your profile is complete and has a detailed something. Talking forward. What recruiters see? So when let's say a recruiter is coming to your website, what is the forcing, what, not the first thing, but what are the key things they are going to look at? Your, your profile photo to start with. So it's important you have, you don't have those, you know, shiny images from weddings in those like shiny blazers or something? No, have a professional photo in your LinkedIn, in your LinkedIn, with a neutral background preferably, okay? Have a proper heading. There is a heading in the LinkedIn that you can add where you can probably specify what is the role you are working in, which company you are working with. See, this is a very, very generic syntax that I'm giving you, like role, you can give your stack, then you are giving like open to work or something like that. You don't specifically have to follow the structure, but make sure you have a heading of minimum one line, max to max one and a half to two lines, not more than that. Include your role like SG three at Adobe, that's it, probably that's it. So after that guys, about section, about section is something that we are going to use in a proper way manner. In the about section, you can write in the probably, probably like two to three paragraphs about different companies you have worked with, different problems that you have faced and how you, you know, how you surface through those challenges, how you work through those problems to get the results. Then an experience, as I said again, LinkedIn is your like online resume. So experience will mirror your resume. So include the relevant experience as well as relevant bullet points using the X, Y, Z method that I shared about earlier. Have the important skills which are aligned with your job profile, aligned with industry-specific trends in your profile. I can understand like altering your LinkedIn profile for each job is not a good idea, like LinkedIn profile is going to remain static. Resume is something that you can alter for your each job, like whenever you apply. But LinkedIn profile have a common LinkedIn profile, don't update it very often, but add skillset along, along, on the lines of your skillset, on the lines of the work that you have done in the past and the trends which are coming in the market. Learn something new and then add it as a skill. Lastly guys, having a regular presence on LinkedIn is important. So most people just create a LinkedIn profile and they don't really check that out in months. So that is not a good idea. Being active on LinkedIn is important. Why? Because when you are active on LinkedIn, you will gain visibility across different engineers, different hiring managers, different HRs. So that if your profile is active, they can directly reach out to you based on the description that you have shared on the profile. So have the engagement on LinkedIn by some weekly posts or engaging in different, different posts by other people on LinkedIn. Some hacks guys, adding media. So whenever you make a post on LinkedIn, make sure you include a slide deck or some, you know, demo images or some repo URLs. Make sure you do that. You can use that open to work highlight on your profile which will show the recruiters that yes, you are looking for a job right now. LinkedIn also has a feature to set the job alerts. Leverage that guys, you have the features at your hand, leverage those features to get the targeted alerts for the kind of jobs that you want to interview for. And you can, as I said, you can engage with different kind of post along with creating your own post so that you increase your visibility on LinkedIn. Engaging in networking. So here I want to share one personal experience with you. This year I went to a conference which was the biggest cybersecurity conference in India which is called a Nalcon. So it happens every time, every year in India around the month of March. This year, the first time I went there, I was, I was taken aback by the kind, by the number of people, number of students in fact, who reached out to me at the conference, asking for a referral, asking for the job hirings in my team. So conferences, webinars, all of these are very good platform to do the networking and networking will take you a very, very long. Let me give you an example. If someone wants to hire a fresher, how will they do that? Well, they'll probably just put a posting on their profile and people will apply and they will be taken, that's good. But do you think the hiring at a senior level happens the same way? The answer is no. If a company wants to hire, let's say some chief staff, chief executive staff or let's say a founding member or a co-founder or whatnot, at that kind of level, the hiring happens via networking, via the connections that you have built, people refer you. There are no job postings which are made for a position of let's say CEO. I'm not saying that all of us are going to become CEO in the coming future, but the point I'm trying to make here is networking takes you a long, long way. So engage in network with people, use LinkedIn for that, share regular content and consume regular content about the industry using LinkedIn and create that network of yourself, of different individuals. You can focus on different people, different engineers who are working in the companies that you aim to work for. You can probably work with the individuals on their projects if they are hiring. I see a lot of posts on LinkedIn where people say like I have a project if someone is interested, reach out. So yeah, all of that happens, all of those gates open only when you have the right set of people connected to you. Believe me, it takes you a long way if there, you are surrounded by the right set, right set of people, doors open automatically. Sometimes you don't even have to look for the opportunities and they'll come your way. Only and only if you are connected with the right set of people. So build that network on LinkedIn, leverage LinkedIn for that. Next guys, I want to talk about some hiring tips, like what exactly the hiring process looks like. So what is the process? Here is like what really happens, okay? Here is what really happens. The hiring funnel, it has different stages and it goes through all of these stages. So first of all, there is a sourcing which means there will be a posting or share about the job posting at different platforms. After that, of all the resumes that are collected, they will be passing through the ATS platforms. Once that is done, the recruiter will have the defined set of like 10, 15, 50 resumes, out of which the candidates will be interviewed. Then those like 50 resumes, 50-something resume go to the hiring manager, the person in whose team the hiring is supposed to happen. They will again do the filtering of the candidates and then there will be the interviews which will be happening, the interview panel will sit. So different stages. Now if you look at it, you can't work on the sourcing part, you can't work on the interview panel or hiring manager part. The major place where people fail is the ATS part. That is what I have also written, where, where resumes fail most at ATS. So this is very, very important to make sure resume passes the ATS so that at least you get a chance where a recruiter, a hiring manager is at least looking at your resume. Right? Because humans can be biased, come on, humans can be biased and we are biased most of the time. The machines are not biased. Machine will not think like if this person has worked for so-and-so company, I should move it forward, no. The company, the ATS tools will solely focus on the terminology that you have used in your resume, the structure that you are following for resume. On the other hand, if there is a human sitting there, if you have mentioned, let's say Amazon, they might take you through even though you have not done good projects. You have written Google, there is a good chance your resume, you will definitely be interviewed. So with humans, there comes a bias. But with ATS tools, it's a machine, there are no biases there. So your resume will either pass or fail based on the content that you have specified in your resume. Now how to win? Yes guys, how can you win? How can you get that chance to be interviewed? Well, follow this strategy. First of all, be so active that as soon as a job posting is listed, you get a notification about it as soon as possible. Because statistics say like mostly only the candidates who have submitted their resumes within the first 48 to 72 hours, they are the only one who gets interviewed. Applying after that rarely makes a sense. So apply as soon as possible, probably within 48 to 72 hours. Tune in the top one-third of your resume as per the job description which you have got. Referrals are a key highlight guys, referrals are a key highlight. Using the referrals, you can probably bypass ATS as well. So sometimes what happens is the person, the engineer that you are taking a referral from, they'll probably share your resume directly with the hiring manager. So you did not have to go through this, you did not have to go through this, you directly jumped here. It does not always happen, but yes, sometimes it gives you an edge. So referrals, they work a long way and don't worry, on LinkedIn, there are tons of people who are there to help you out when it comes to referrals. Because come on, every referral, if a candidate is hired, the person will get a, some amount of money if you, if the referral went through. Like for example, last time I checked, Amazon pays like 1.5 lakhs I guess, if the person you referred, they get hired. So and everyone is here to help you out. If you want a referral for a company and there is no one in your contact list, on the LinkedIn, go to the LinkedIn, reach out to 15, 20 people of that company. At least one person will definitely respond and they'll give you the, they'll give you the referral. You can use a standard script. So I also used to do the same thing back in my olden days. But yeah, you can create a standard script. I can also share a script with you guys in the chat section that you can follow to do this, to reach out to the people in this particular manner. After that guys, don't use LinkedIn to only reach out to the recruiters. Use engineers, use your college alumni as well. College alumni are always there to help you out. Come on, just think about it. If someone from your own house is asking you for help, there is a good chance you will help that person compared to a stranger. Come on, just think about it, if someone from your own house is asking you for help, there is a good chance you will help that person compared to a stranger. Illumina network works on the similar lines, if you have worked, if you have studied in the same college, same university, there is a good chance they'll help you out. Compared to reaching out to someone with whom you have no common point of uh interest. Lastly guys, keep a tracker where you can see like different people that you reached out to, different job that you applied to so that you can track your progress. All right. Personal branding, again, a very important aspect in today's digital world. Guys, in today's digital world, you know about influencers, influencers. Get paid about the for their skills, no doubt about it, but there are also a lot of people out there who are making like. Random videos, random content which is not adding any value to anyone's life and then still. They are making tons of money and people are reaching out to them for advertisements and whatnot. So that, all of that is happening because of personal branding, so you need to make sure that your personal brand gives out the right message to LinkedIn. So develop an online consistent presence, by consistent I mean don't do this like for three weeks you are. Doing actively posting on LinkedIn, actively reaching out to people, connecting with people. Uh re reacting to the different post and then for a month you are like no place around, don't do that. Have a consistent online presence, showcase your expertise using some content creation, guys, it is very easy in today's digital era to. Use different online platforms, you have Claude, you have Gemini, you have Chat G P T, whatnot. Use them to create the content, it could be like normal text, it could be like visuals, anything. And post it so that you create your presence and engage with guys, industry leaders. There is a good chance they'll not respond, but think about it, if they respond, what do you have to lose? Well, you don't have anything to lose, you have everything to gain in that respect, right? So reach out to the people, reach out to the leaders, learn from them, follow them and create your personal brand. Leverage different alumni networks guys and attend and uh attend industry conferences for the networking strategies. For example, recently I went to Bangalore for some work, there I saw some conference which is happening on AI. So check out what conferences, what uh webinars, what uh different uh. Interactions are happening in your area, in the I T sector and probably attend these because then you get a chance to interact with the like minded people in the same way. Okay, moving on. Career guided work time, so here what I want is there is small activity that I want all of you to do. You all probably have a resume, if you do not have a resume created, then it's fine, don't worry about it, pick out a project and you can follow that. What I want you all to do is create or rewrite basically two resume bullet points related to your projects using the X Y Z formula. X Y Z means I did X measured by Y by doing Z, so rewrite. Sorry, rewrite like at least two resume bullet points using this X Y Z formula. Add some metrics, probably three metrics to your project and if you uh still have time, then update LinkedIn profile. I'll take a pause for five to seven minutes here, work on this guys and share your response in the chat section. Rework on your resume guys, take this five to seven minutes, rework on your resume. Pick up any project and add at least two resume bullet points on that using X Y Z formula where you add the metrics to highlight the impact and you update your LinkedIn profile. If you have created anything, any kind of content related to your project guys, do share it with me in the chat section. I also want to add one thing here, if you get a response, if you um. Okay, just think about it. Let's say there are two people, one who has worked on a project that he that they created on their own computer system. So they created let's say an e-commerce website or something like that. And then there is the other person who had a friend who is doing a startup. The friend reached out to you and he asked you, he like, can you create a website for me, let's say? And you created the website for them and although it could be a very simple website, a very, very simple one page landing page, it's fine. But still, which one of these two projects do you think will have the more impact? The one that you created on your own local system, it can have like three, four pages functionalities but not. Do you think that will have more impact or do you think the other project which one page project which was created for a startup? Which one is more impactful? I definitely believe the one page project which you created for that startup of your friend, that would be more impactful because there. There are people who are actively using your project, if you create a project on your local system, no one is going to use it, come on. It is just sitting down on their system. If something is wrong in your project, you will not even get to know about it because no one is using it. On the other hand, if if you create even a single page project for let's say a startup, a simple page website, it is going to add a lot of value. That website is the face, is the face of that particular brand, it's the face of that particular person. So you can showcase the impact by the number of people who are visiting the website, the number of responses that you are collecting from the contact. As forms and whatnot. So life projects are always more helpful and are always more uh impactful. And when we are talking about life projects, that where that's where you can actually add these metrics. You can actually add these metrics because just think about it, if a project sitting on your local machine, then what kind of metric you will add? So think along those line guys, if you get an opportunity around you, then grab that opportunity to work on a real world project, even if you contribute one small. Component to a project, it is going to add a lot more value. Guys, we are going to, I am going to wait for just two to three more minutes. If anyone has uh written or rewritten anything, then you can share it in the chat section, I can probably give you a quick feedback and then we can move on. All right guys, if you do not have anything to share, let's move on then. Actionable steps, so talking about that guys. Setting goals and staying updated. It's very crucial that you set up some clear measurable goals, clear and measurable goals, this is again very important term, measurable goals. So that you can actually progress in your career. As I said earlier, professional development is not about working at X Y Z company, no. Professional development is about staying updated with the changing trends in the industry, things which are coming new in the industry. Because we are working in a very dynamic sector. So learn about the industry trends, how exactly things are changing, probably subscribe to the newsletters. There are so many good platforms you can reach out to to get updated and LinkedIn is your primary source, LinkedIn stay connected to the right set of people and you will get all the info. Leverage the different courses and planning guys, online courses, they, as I said, certifications are like adding a feather in your cap. So certifications take you a long way only when you do the right set of certifications and you know how to show the impact of those certifications. So enroll into the courses which are relevant to your field or things which are trending in the industry. For example, right now, everything is about A I and A I. I always tell everyone to do some kind of at least basic course about the A I so that you at least have an idea about what it is about. You at least understand when someone is saying I worked on this L L M model, you understand what they are saying. So at least get some basic understanding of these things by the online courses. Create a very simple roadmap for the skill acquisition guys, set some timelines to it and then regularly work towards achieving that goal. This is the reputable action plan that you can follow to uh proceed forward, first step would be resume reset. Create your resume, recreate your resume basically using the A T S rule that we talked about. So that is like resetting of the resume. If I show you my first resume, I also can't believe like that was my first resume, it was very bad, lot of white spaces, no relevant content, anything. But once you start, you have that base on top of which you can create. That first resume will act as a foundation on top of which you will build and you will improve. So starting is the very first thing you need to start and you need to get through. Day two guys, you can work on the LinkedIn upgrade, work on that, work, update your LinkedIn profile, update your heading, update your experience, skill set, photo, about section. Add relevant media wherever required. Next one is day three where you can do a project power up, rewrite your project bullet points using the X Y Z method that I talked about. It is very, very helpful, it is very impactful. Networking sprint where you connect with at least ten professionals from targeted companies like, okay, I want to reach, I want to go into Adobe, reach out to ten people from. I want to get into Google, connect with ten people from Google. Then guys, visibility and proof, so build at least one bit log or create one post every week. On LinkedIn and you can probably comment on the relevant post to expand your network. Lastly, reflect and repeat. You review the outcomes guys, you after following this process, after couple of weeks, we'll be able to see. Improvement in the number of people who are responding back, you will see an increase in the number of people who are. Visiting your profile, viewing your profile and reaching out to you. But this is not a one time activity, this is a regular sprint where you repeat this process over and over every week. So follow this and you will increase your visibility and you'll uh see a good increase in the number of people recruiters specifically reaching out to you. Commit to action. So now you have all the information you need guys, one last bit that I have to share from my end is. The cold um. Miss the cold uh the message to reach out to the people, so let me share that in the chat section. So I have prepared three messages, I'm not sure if all of them will add, uh I'll be able to share in the chat with the right set of format. One is the email format, so this is the email format. Okay, it, what cut backend? This is the complete format everyone. Now this is the complete format, this is for the cold email template, if you are reaching out to your let's say Illumina or some other engineer, you can use this. For the LinkedIn connection request, you can use this. You can share, you can use this. And if someone responds back to you on LinkedIn, then you can use this for the follow up message. And if there is a recruiter, you can reach out to the recruiter using this message. So follow this guys, I have shared them with you, I cannot share them on WhatsApp or any other platform, probably old Kardos team can take care of that, but yes.
Yes, I will share with them, I will share with them.
Thanks Shubham, so now it's time to take the action on whatever we have talked about today guys. Now I hope this session added to your knowledge about A T S platforms. On how LinkedIn is very important for your personal branding, for your personal online resume. Because as I said, it's your referral machine, if you cater it properly, you will never have a problem in getting the referrals and uh. In problem in right set of people reaching out to you. So now it's time to take the action on these things, with this, I leave you guys today, thank you so much for joining this session everyone, I hope you found it helpful. Shubham, do we have anything else to discuss or any feedback form or anything to share?
I will level share with them, okay, so guys, if you have any questions, any doubt now, uh so you can ask, otherwise uh we can uh. Like, I will share the feedback on the same, okay?
One, yeah, please go.
Uh sir, I'm a recent graduate from C M R college. And I want to ask about LinkedIn visibility, so like you have told that uh. Uh daily postings and the visibility is more important, what type of uh posts and visibility is?
Right, so first of all, Shireen Jeevi, do not post on a daily basis. Clear your people, a clearer following list first of all, take it as a first action item. During my college days, I was the placement coordinator, so I was connected with a whole set of people, I had thirty five plus thirty five hundred plus connections. One day I sat and I cleared that connection list and reduced it to eight hundred. It's very important you do not have junk sitting in in your following list. Because if that's the case, then the post that you are going to see on LinkedIn is, today it's my birthday, today I am getting married. And that is like adding no value, right, LinkedIn is a professional platform. So first of all, filter out your following list, people you are that currently following. Check who you want to be there, who you do not want to be there, one. Secondly, do not post on a daily basis. Post like one time a week, two time a week, that is sufficient, that is sufficient, probably one time a week to start with. But interact with people on the other people's post, if you see a post which you can resonate with, probably drop a comment, sharing your thoughts on that. So that is a way to increase your visibility, right? Thirdly, what kind of content you can share, if you're starting, you might have seen a lot of people even on Instagram and other social media platforms. Creating those ten day challenge, fifty day challenge but not. So you can create, this is just an idea, you can create a challenge like that, like a hundred day D S A challenge where you solve one or two D S A problems every day. And you can probably share in, you can uh share one post in a week where you share your problems. That way you will be, you will be staying committed to your goal at the same time increasing your uh enhancing your uh LinkedIn visibility. So this is just an idea which you can follow. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, sir, thank you, sir.
All right. One last piece of advice I want to give you all as guys, whenever you apply. There is a good chance, a lot of those companies will not respond, that is the harsh reality, come on. There is a good chance, lot of those companies will not respond, let me share and share my example with you. Uh. Yeah, yesterday it was complete, I completed three years at Adobe. So when I was trying to switch my job, I started applying at random places in November or December. And I got into the company in August next year. So even though I was prepared, it took me seven to eight months to switch to a new company. But the message that I am trying to share with you guys is, in around December or January, I applied in a company. Which did not reach out to me at that time. But once I got a offer from Adobe, it's not like they got to know or something, that very same time they reached out to me for an interview. I interviewed for them, I cleared the interview and I had two offers. I interviewed for them, I cleared the interview and I had two offers at my hand. That company was Dunzo which I think is now closed, but yeah Dunzo and Adobe. So keep applying, the thing I am trying to tell you is keep applying because when you apply, even though if you are not getting a response today. You might get a response at a later stage. So do not feel lighthearted when you feel like no one is accepting or no one is responding right now, it will help you down the line. Because now your name, your resume is in their database, alright? Alright guys, with this, I leave you all today. Thank you so much for joining. Have a wonderful evening guys, all the best.
Thanks Sabindra, bye bye guys.